Good evening. I would like to call the meeting of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals for 13th May 2nd, 2024 to order. Uh, the first order of business is to call the roll.
Bruce Forster.
Here.
Craig Burrow.
Here.
Mike Pratt is not present. Rex Meyer.
Present.
Luke Phelan.
Here.
Uh, the next piece of business is the approval of the previous minutes from March 7th, April 3rd, April 4th, and April 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. The next piece of business is a motion to adjourn pursuant to the county board's vote on petition number 24-P-1621 by Pulse Solar 2 LLC special use permit.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. There is no old business tonight, so we'll start out with new business.
Before we proceed to the new business, I just want to comment on the old business. Um, we currently have a petition pending with, um, Mr. And Mrs. Dewey. I don't know if you guys recalled, they were looking to rezone to an R1, um, the property is located in Palmyra Township. Um, that petition is still pending. Um, they are, we are trying to see if it can be resolved. Um, so just wanted to let you know that one is still pending. Um, it's just not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. So the next thing is new business. And it's petition number 24-P-1624, Richard Humphrey Jr. And Brenda Humphrey is owners of certain real property identified as PIN number 16-01-35-400-009, commonly known as 1556 Red Brick Road, Dixon, Illinois, located on the east side of Rick Red Brick Road between US 52 and McGur Road in South Dixon Township, Lee County, Illinois, which is zoned Aguan Agricultural District. Um, filed a petition for a special use permit with the Lee County zoning office requesting it be granted an accessory special use for the purpose of skilled trades off-site services only, for the purpose of parking refuse trucks and equipment. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I need a swear in sheet.
Yes, we have to have those. You'll have to wait a minute. Okay. So that you can be sworn in.
Stand up and do the.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the penalty of perjury? Testimony or about to give?
Sorry.
Richard Humphrey Jr.
If I may start out, um, I just want to confirm that notification requirements for this petition have been met. Um, public, uh, notice of public hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on April 17th. Uh, notice was mailed to adjacent property owners on April 16th. Uh, notice was also provided to the city of Dixon and the city of Dixon's planning commission as well. Um, referring to his petition, um, what we are looking at is it's kind of a newer ordinance. Um, this was recently adopted in 2023. Um, the intent was to be able to have a trade type of business in the agricultural setting, um, so long as certain requirements were met. Um, if you look at the definition of skilled trade in the Lee County code, um, it states for the purpose of this title, a skilled trade shall include, but is not limited to, the following: carpenter, electrician, plumber, painter, HVAC technician, home remodeling and repair, roofer and locksmith. If a potential skilled trade has not been provided for under this definition, the zoning administrator shall have the authority to determine whether a potential skilled trade shall be included under this definition. Um, the reason that you are, that this petition is going forward as it is, is because the business he conducts does not require any onsite employees. The services are provided offsite. Um, so there's minimal, um, foot traffic required for this type of, of business. So the closest thing that we could find, um, to help bring this property into compliance was the skilled trade. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Humphrey.
Tell us what you're doing.
Well, my, uh, three boys own Midwest disposal. And, uh, they've been operating out of there now for about two to three years. Business has been growing. And, uh, they've been using my shop and in our area for parking the trucks and things of that nature. And, and so, um, just thought that the right thing to do is we'd be presented to the board and, and make sure that we're in compliance with zoning and, and whatever we need to do to be able to continue to operate out of there. Good.
Are all the trucks licensed?
To my knowledge.
So they've just been licensed truck parked outdoors?
Yes, yep. And they serve us in, in our shop. They serve change of oil and stuff there and things in that repair. Any repairs, we pull it in the shop and try to fix them inside.
Got any more questions?
I have a question for the zoning officer. At what point do you have to, uh, have a special use permit?
I'm sorry?
At what point do you have to have a special use permit? Does my neighbor that parks his, uh, tractor trailer at his house have to get one too?
No, um, essentially because this is related to a business, a, a garbage business. Um, and we know that there's going to be an excess amount of trucks from that business on that property. Um, the use is not compatible then with the zone.
One truck would be okay though.
My neighbor has one truck.
Is it?
Business. He hauls steel for a living. So is he in compliance?
He would be, um, potentially. I mean, I would have to look at all of the factors. So he might fall under a home occupation. So depending on what he's doing, if he's not doing any business at the residence and it's all offsite, then, then yes, you can have a, a personal vehicle. Um, without knowing more of the details though on that, I, I can't really say for sure.
Rick, how many trucks you got?
Uh, I believe there's, if you count like the delivery vehicle, the actual garbage trucks or all trucks?
All trucks.
I think there's seven, if I'm not mistaken. How many garbage trucks? Uh, that would be six, because I think the ones of delivery vehicle. I, I think that we, the, the boundaries that we encompass is about 12 acres, 12 and a half acres. So I mean, it's not like it's trying to spot zone or anything like that. There's plenty of room for, you know, for not.
So do you store garbage containers there too?
They do come in and get unloaded there, but they've been going out as fast as they get delivered. So there, there, there's going to be a small inventory of, of garbage containers, but typically they're not there for extended period of time.
Just a quick question for the zoning administrator. Uh, they mentioned that the business is growing. Is there anything further down the line, if they got bigger, that they would run into in regards to, in being in compliance with, uh, Lee County zoning rules?
It would depend on what kind of conditions you put on this permit. Um, if you put limitations, um, you know, like limit the number of trucks or type of equipment, um, that would impact what they would be able to do in the future. So you can have a little bit of that. Um, with what you're doing tonight, you can make that determination.
Thank you.
The, the petition was submitted with a legal description of the area this special use would apply. The special use would not apply to the entire property, but just the 12 acres that is described in the legal description. Um, therefore, if this were to be approved, um, they would be able to utilize all of that approximate 12 acres um, for this use.
Thank you.
And the intent is that the current, I guess I'll call it gravel area, there's lots of lots and stuff there that we use for our cattle operation. There's no desire to expand the, the footprint of what's already gravel and, and that parking area. So uh, we would, it would all be maintained in that area.
When we've done this in the past, we did this for a plumbing company.
I'm sorry?
When we did this in the past, we did this for a, a, a electrician. That's what it was.
Yes.
And I know that they kept all of their vehicles inside. You're looking to put them all outside or keep them outside.
For the current time being, I'm not saying that down the road, that might not be a possibility, but it's kind of fiscally not feasible.
Currently, it's not feasible.
Well, yeah, currently. I'm not saying that at some point in time that there, I mean, like this winter, you know, when it was really cold, we squeezed them all into the existing buildings so that they would be able to operate the next day. So we did have them inside for that day, but it's not, you know, a non-going practice. And for the most part, I mean, they're, they get in later in the afternoon and they leave early in the morning. So during the day, they're typically not there when, you know, people can see them. I mean, unless you drive by at four or five o'clock in the afternoon, then they're there, but. And they do set currently where they're parked. They are set off to the east of the existing building. So it's not like they're right along the road, you know, as a nice sort, but they're kind of tucked back out of the way. I did talk to Alice too. If it helps you in your decision-making, um, that, you know, we would have no problems with, um, a condition that says that the property was ever sold outside of us or the boys that don't, you know, have the trash business, that it wouldn't go with the new owner. If we don't foresee ever selling, but if that put the board's mind at ease, that, uh, we'd be willing to put that in as a condition.
Do you have skilled trade? Have you got a definition for what they do as far as what, what we list on here for skilled trade? Is carpenter, electrician, plumber, painter, HVAC technician, home remodeling and repair, roofer and locksmith?
And then you, if you read on, if it doesn't fit into that category, there is latitude given to the zoning administrator. Um, as they stated earlier, um, this is a compliance issue. Um, so trying to look at how we could make that use work at the property, the closest thing that we could find was the skilled trades. Um, so then it's up to this board to determine whether, um, this meets the code, um, if this meets the intent, and then to make a recommendation thereon.
You got any more questions?
I have some questions if the board is done.
What's that?
I have some questions if the board is done.
Okay.
I just want to go through the ordinance. Um, the ordinance requires that the owner, owner of the business must reside on site. Um, is that correct in this situation?
Yes, my youngest son Derek, uh, he's the, I'll call him general manager of the, of the business. He lives on site.
Um, another requirement of this code is that, um, it would be allowed businesses that provide skilled trades off-site services only shall be allowed under this section so long as all services provided by the business are performed offsite. Does that apply to your proposed use?
Yes.
Um, the ordinance also requires that businesses that provide skilled trades off-site service only that are allowed under this section shall be limited to one employee at the physical address of the business during business hours. Will there be more than one employee on site during business hours?
Just, uh, I guess you consider the drivers when they come in to, to man their trucks, but then they physically leave, so. Then.
So they don't remain there during the business hours? They just come in, they get their equipment and they leave? Okay. Uh, is any retail goods being sold at the property?
None.
Um, is the business location open to the public?
I guess technically anybody can pull in the driveway, um, but we don't advertise, you know, there's not a lot of foot traffic there. There's no reason to come out there, so.
Do you have a dedicated building on the property that is an office or anything where people congregate or is it just, okay?
There's an area for the, to answer the phone, but there's no dedicated office per se.
Um, is there any manufacturing assembly of, of equipment going on?
Done.
Will there be any combustible materials, chemicals, or hazardous materials?
I sure hope not. No.
Um, the ordinance requires no odors, fumes, radiation, or noise, uh, may emanate from the premises. Um, I know odor has been raised as a concern. How do you plan to address that?
I don't know if they can distinguish the difference between the cows or the garbage trucks, but, um, I haven't physically talked to anybody about a complaint, so I'm, was unaware of any complaints.
Is there any, um, refuse being stored at the property?
None. I mean, the trucks might come in at night with a minimal amount where they, you know, just got full, they went and dumped and maybe picked up a couple stops on the way back, but it's not a practice to come back with, you know, full loads of trash.
And the last requirement is the no inventory or material storage outdoor, uh, may be permitted in relation to the business without first applying for a special use permit. Um, I know you've talked about the potential of parking the trucks indoors, but it's more likely that you're going to be storing the equipment outdoors.
That would be the desire.
I have nothing further.
Good.
Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Ho- how many trucks? How many trucks, uh, is the plan?
I mean, it's, I guess that's kind of an open-ended question as, as many as, as business dictates, but like I said, currently there's six or seven. Um, I mean, I, uh, that's a good question. I, I don't know. That'd be more, probably more a question for, for the business, but, uh, I do know that they do have one other truck coming that they've ordered, uh, so there will be one additional truck coming. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Brent, could you please identify your first and last name for the record?
Uh, Brent Mitchell.
Thank you. Brandon, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a button. If you want to press that button, it should turn green. Did it turn green?
There you go. Name's Brandon Hudson. Um, you stated, or it states in here that the owner of the business must reside on site. You said your son is the owner, correct? Part owner?
He's one of the owners, yes.
Is he planning on living there the whole time? Does he plan on buying?
He's lived there for six years now.
How old is he? Is, does he plan on moving out, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I mean, not, not that I'm aware of, no.
That's all for the questions.
Anybody else have a question? Comment?
I'd love comments.
Got a lot of comments. Anything else? Good.
Did anyone have anything, um, did any of the interested hu- parties, um, have any evidence they want to present that would require being sworn in and, and speaking under oath? Just want to make sure. And then if there you do, okay, why don't you come on up? We'll swear you in.
Back there. Please state your name.
My name is Richard Topper. I am here to address some of the concerns about my neighbors trying to be zone commercial. My first concern is what this will do to my property value. My home is my biggest investment and do not believe it is fair that my property value should be compromised for financial gain for the Humphreys. My wife and I purchased our property 20 years ago. This area has always been agricultural and is the reason we settled here. My wife and I never would have considered moving there if there was a garbage service operating next to us. I believe that not many would. I am now dealing with constant garbage truck traffic that will most likely increase dramatically if allowed to be zone commercial. I've had to deal with the upsurge of traffic and everything else garbage related, the noise, smell, and blowing garbage, et cetera. I am confused as to you operating your business when you are not zoned for it. If this was okay for you to do, why did I get a registered letter from the zoning board regarding this matter? Besides your financial gain by eliminating paying rent or buying another property zone commercial, what do your neighbors gain? I am 100% against this and think anyone else in my position would be also. There was no garbage facility up the road from me when I bought the property, so I'm having a hard time understanding why I have to deal with this garbage issue now. I am not going to deal with living next to a garbage hub and I am not moving. Humphreys need to work out of an industrial park or somewhere where ice, somewhere isolated, more isolated, so neighbors do not have to deal with the mess that is involved with the garbage business. Thanks.
Can we ask you a couple of questions? Do you actually smell the garbage?
Yes, I have on occasion.
On occasion?
Yes.
Depending on which way the wind's blowing?
Yes, it's very windy out there, so it can be on any given day.
Next question. Is there a, a prevailing wind that you typically smell that at?
Whatever ways the wind is blowing.
Well, I mean, if it's coming out of the south or the east or which ways?
Whatever's, whatever way's coming towards my house.
So the, out of the southeast?
Mm-hmm.
You know what landfill gas odor smells like?
Yeah, I know what the difference between cattle and garbage smell.
Gas, you know what that smells like?
No.
Okay, I, I do. I manage the facility down Lee County. And that's where you can smell the odor coming from, uh, the southeast. I smell it all the time. It's not coming from our facility. It's coming from Lee County landfill.
I've never smelled it before. They had their garbage business there ever.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you. Alice?
Yes.
Have you had any complaints about any blowing trash or anything picked up or?
I only received one, uh, once this was filed and notice was sent out.
Okay, I was just, anybody drove by? Has there been any issues picking up trash or? I mean, I pick up more trash out of my dri- out of the ditches than I do from this, from this business.
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, you want to be sworn in?
If you're testifying, you'll need to be sworn in.
Name's Brandon Hudson. The current owner of 1552 US 52. I think that's the actual address. It's the neighbor to Mr. Humphrey's, uh, current farm. It is the, known as St. James Church. I have owned it since about a year and a half now, I should say, uh, August 20 23? Oh, 2022, excuse me. Um, it was built in approximately 18 90s, I believe. With the exception of me owning it, as far as to my knowledge, um, there has been a congregation in there operating up until I owned it and then about, for about five months, nobody was in there. I now have a congregation in there, uh, for the next two years and they love it as their home. I don't know why they would want a garbage facility next door. I do have a map, an overview map of proposition, if you guys would like to look at it.
Please.
So on that map, within a quarter mile of this proposed zoning, there's five residences and one active church. Half mile, there's eight residences, one active church. And in a mile, there's 19 residents and one active church. Then 400 feet is US 52. What else we got here? My question is, where does it stop? If you give him the 12 acres now, what's saying that he's not going to move the garbage trucks to the road? Why would you want to come in and tear up your yard, your driveway as opposed to just pulling in and parking right there? I don't think, I cannot speak for the congregation, but I don't think they would be very thrilled to step outside and have to look at that or have trash in their yard, if that makes sense. And their congregation is approximately 70, I believe. I can't vouch for that. Um, their main church is 400, I believe, strong up in. Their main church is 400, I believe, strong up in Minnesota. So they do have room for growth. And I'm just trying to save an over 100-year-old building. That's it.
You have any questions?
What's your zoning on the church properties?
I don't use it for anything other than the congregation to be in there, so I don't really know. I know Alice informed me prior, but I can't.
So I believe it's residential, is that correct?
According, according to our zoning map, it is zone Ag 1 Rural Agricultural District.
Well, a church needs a special use, doesn't it?
Not in the Ag district.
I believe it says according to the, I think it does.
That was adopted in 2005. This church has been in existence prior to the...
That church congregation disbanded. It was sold and turned back to residential. Ed Miller purchased it from the church. He told, turned around and sold it to him. It reverted back to residential, so it should be a residential property.
I don't, I don't have any record that that changed the zoning.
Oh, that's the ways, typically the way zoning works.
I can look into it.
It reverts back to the most restrictive and that would be residential.
Actually, in Lee County, it is Ag.
Well, this still requires a special use.
I will have to look into that.
Okay. And again, the congregation is, I'm not trying to throw stones because I don't mind having them there. But they're parking in the right of way. They've been outside playing in our yard. I haven't said a word about it. I have, as far as I know, they're good neighbors. Actually, one of their employees or one of our employees is a member of their congregation. So I have not had any complaints from the church whatsoever. And they just moved in three weeks ago, I think, four, maybe a month, something like that.
I cannot speak on the church's behalf, but I can't imagine they would like it. Who would?
Again, there's no trash anywhere. I mean, there's been no complaints up until this was filed. And that could have been just retaliatory, I guess. If there would have been issues with it, we would have had people knocking on the door. And like I said, I pick up more off of Route 52 and Red Brick Road in the ditches when we mow. Then there's any kind of trash coming from the facility.
Rick, does a landfill still check the trucks before you leave or not?
I don't, which landfill are you talking about? Lee County, I don't know.
Remember that was an issue?
We don't use, we don't use that facility.
Oh, okay. That was an issue on Route 30 with all of it.
Yeah, that's, that was blown out as they're coming out underneath their tarps.
For curiosity, which landfill do you use?
Whiteside, majority. They do dump up in Davis Junction once in a while.
Any more questions?
Rick, how long have you had trucks there when you start this business again?
I think this is close to three years. And the other thing too, as I look through this, the zoning districts, I mean, I struggled with coming and filing under Public Utility Services. That's just, it's permitted in Ag 1. And I looked up the definition of a public utility and I think it qualifies for that. But this was what Alice suggested and thought this would be the proper way to do it. We're just trying to do things the right way. So I've got three properties here that are probably out of compliance. But I'm not here to throw stones. I'm just here to try to do the right thing.
Do you mainly serve Dixon? Or do you serve Morrison, Sterling, anything else?
They service the entire northern Illinois region.
Just a little bit everywhere.
Pardon me?
Sorry, I'm just curious if it's, if the business is mainly in Dixon, serving the Dixon community? Or you're storing trucks there and serving other communities? And then just this area has to deal with the smell, possible trash, et cetera?
They, they service a lot of accounts in Dixon, Sterling Rock Falls, and then the outline areas as well.
Anyone else?
Rick has mentioned that he's just trying to do everything the right way. But I had seen that his son had gotten pulled over and charged with not having a valid commercial driver's license. Is this something that is just overlooked or is this something that you don't check into?
I'm not sure that's correct statement. Who's that?
Pardon?
Who's, who got pulled over?
Derek.
He's got a CDL.
Well, what was that in the paper about?
Not sure.
Well, there was something about him not having a commercial driver's license.
Oh, he's got a CDL.
Well, maybe now.
No, he's always had one.
Okay.
If there's no other comments from the public testimony or just comments, then you guys should close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and move into the finding of facts.
I move we close the evidentiary portion of these special use permit.
We have a motion to close the evidentiary and move on to the findings of facts. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Do you want me to read them? Yeah, go ahead. Okay. The effect on the proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood. I would say very little effect.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, with what had type of work that had been done on that property before with, well, previously horses, but cattle, I mean, for what the buildings were built for. There's always been some activity on there or some type.
You making that a motion? Or is that a commentary?
That's commentary.
I move that we make the finding fact that there is a small amount of change to the character of the neighborhood.
Second. Here, shall we? Hold on a group.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there any other effects to the proposed use? Do we need to list what they are? Visuals of garbage trucks sitting out there?
Small change proposed use on neighborhood as trucks will be visible. What about occasional odor?
Can I intervene there, Chairman?
No.
No?
We're past the evidentiary.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I guess, I don't know that there's any evidence, I mean, that there's any odor. I mean, it's, it's... Okay.
You're past.
Sorry, that's right.
Yeah, we have never had any factual way of measuring odor, I don't think, with all the type of things we've dealt with in the past. Anything else?
So occasional odor from the trucks?
Anything else? If not, would you like to read that as a motion?
There would be a small change proposed because of the proposed use on neighborhood as trucks are visible and occasional order from trucks.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Section two, the effects on, of the proposed use upon traffic conditions.
On that one, I would say it would be minimal if you've got six trucks leaving in the morning and six trucks coming back at night.
Minimally increased traffic.
Right.
Basically during the day, there's just no traffic associated with the business.
Right. Right. So.
Would you say minimally increased traffic use of business vehicles and personal vehicles?
What's that?
Would you say minimally increased traffic of the business, commercial vehicles and personal use vehicles? Yes. Any others?
I don't think there's anything else.
Minimally increased traffic by trucks and personal vehicles.
You want to make that as a motion?
I'm so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Section three, the effect of the proposed use on public utility facilities.
See, there would be any use of public utilities.
No change to use here.
And we have a motion to that one?
I move.
Craig moves.
A second.
Wait, we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Effect of the proposed use upon public health, public safety, and/or general welfare.
This type of business, the public isn't going to be there. So I don't see much effect on... Public health or anything, just because they're not going to be involved in anything at this location.
You could argue that it's going to improve public health by hauling garbage. What would you say? Limited effect on public health, public safety, and general welfare or?
I think that's what I would say, limited. You want to make a motion?
Limited effect on public health, safety, and welfare. I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Or five, effects of the proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
Obviously, we have two objectors here who are surrounding properties. So. Any thoughts? I'm not allowed to make motions.
I would say that there are, just going over what I can see here, at least five properties within line of sight that do I have to specifically say how they can, how they would be affected, or just, I'd just say affected? There are at least five properties within line of sight of the parcel in question who could be affected by this change.
Are they residences or just properties?
Yes, just residences. I didn't count, just farm.
There are five residents within line of sight that would be affected or could be affected, which
I would say could be affected.
And if there are no others, I'll make that in the form of a motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Part six, effects on proposed use upon environmental concerns. I would say it would not be much different than the agr- the animal agriculture. It's always been there.
Pick up commercial waste, though, it could be different.
So potential environmental concerns.
I would say it could be potential environmental concerns. And then I'm not making a motion, I'm just
We're discussing.
I'm, I'm just saying that could be environmental concerns if there were washing the trucks there. Which could be part of servicing trucks.
Would you want to add in in the form of runoff?
You know, it depends whether they've got brains or set the field for that.
Potential environmental concerns due to waste in trucks or cleaning of trucks.
Got a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Now the fun part.
Recommendations.
Recommendation.
Can we ask Alice?
Yeah.
Can we ask Alice? She's been working on this.
What do you want to ask her?
Well, just based, Alice, based on the code, everything you've been working with, what would you suggest that we consider for recommendations?
Is it recommendation or conditions?
Well, either. Yeah.
Um, the recommendation is up to this board. I, I don't have any say in that. Um, conditions, conditions typically are used to address any nuisance concerns raised by the public. Um, they, I mean, you can do you, you have some leeway with that. I mean, we can't ask anything that is too onerous or require him to spend money or things of that nature. Um.
But well, limiting the number of trucks that the business have there.
That would be a, a condition that you can consider. Um, like he said earlier, you could also make it a condition that if this business were to sell or the property to, was, were to sell, that the special use would essentially go away. Um, you know, you can make it a condition that no refuse can be stored on site. So I, I would suggest taking the comments that we've heard tonight and addressing those through the conditions if you're looking to make a recommendation to approve.
I would recommend that we add a condition should the property ever be sold that the special use permit is no longer valid.
I think we have to make the recommendation to approve or deny it first, and then we can make
Recommendations.
Recommendations.
Okay.
That's why I was thinking about on the vote, about what we're going to put in for conditions, whether I want to pass it or not.
Do we have to discuss them first and then vote on it?
So, like, what you do typically with, like, the wind and solar hearings, a recommendation to approve or deny is usually heard from the board. Um, if it is a recommendation to approve, then the board considers conditions at which they could add. I would, I would suggest doing that. Um, maybe individually, make a motion to adopt them as conditions.
We actually do that, even if we move to not approve. We still put the conditions, recommendations to the county board, even if we recommend not.
Yes.
Right.
So either way, I still want to put your conditions.
We need a recommendation either to prove or deny the petition.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That would be in a form of a motion.
I move to approve the petition.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the petition, and then we'll, we can add later conditions or recommendations, we should say.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just would make the comment to the public that we're trying to take their comments into effect and and what we're thinking about for conditions.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Now we're open to recommendations.
I would move that the special use permit doesn't go if the property is sold, that it discontinues.
Therefore, special uses are normally for the individual that gets them, and when that person isn't there anymore, then the special use has to be reapplied. Correct?
So a special use can transfer so long as the new owner maintains what was set forth in the original special use permit.
All right.
No second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, there any discussion on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. I would like to see a recommendation that the trucks be stored indoors, whether it's in the current building or in a new facility or whatever. Um, and I think a lot of the objections would go away.
Or is she thinking that every night or just over the weekend?
No, I think every night. But that's not in the form of a motion. Somebody else has to do that.
I'll, I'll move it, trucks be stored, what, what timeline?
What's that?
Is there a timeline when they there's enough room there now or?
Should just something to consider indoors or a possible setback? Far enough off the road, there is 12 acres we're talking about here. That would be out of public view and maybe perhaps limit the uh, potential of odors being closer to neighboring residences. A setback of and I don't know how many feet you want to talk off, off of, uh, that, what is it, brick?
Red brick.
Yeah. Red Brick Road.
I would I would rather see them stored indoors, whether it's in the current building or you know, it could even be, you know, lean to or whatever.
Okay, that, that's a good idea, but I'm not sure it's financially feasible either.
Was there a stipulation, Alice, that we couldn't make recommendations that caused a financial burden?
Correct. I mean, it, it gets tricky. Um. It, it's already a requirement of this code that no outdoor storage be allowed without a separate special use.
Right.
So if you're going to require indoor storage pursuant to the code, I would recommend maybe making this contingent upon him obtaining that second special use. Um, that is, he'll, he would have to go through the same process. Um, again, that would have to be recommended by this board and then voted on by the county board. So there's no guarantee with that either. Um, but given what the code is stating, that would be my suggestion.
It says no inventory or ma-stor- material storage outdoor. Doesn't say vehicles.
The, but if, like, but if you're in this business, your inventory is the trucks that hold them.
But what are we going to do, the electrician, when he parks his truck outside?
The electricians, when they did theirs, they were parking them all inside. And they were coming to the facility and picking up their trucks in the morning.
I do believe that was made a condition of that special use permit as well, that all vehicles would be stored in, indoors.
Oh, this just be the garbage trucks or?
The garbage trucks and the, and the thing.
The flatbed haul and the dumpsters or?
Well, but he made the comment that the dumpsters come and they go, because they order them and then they add them out there. So.
Please be specific, just from an enforcement standpoint. Um, I, I can't guess what, what the intent was. So if, if you're going to put restrictions on that, those kind of things, please spell out what we're restricting. If you are going to do the containers, the trucks, I just need to know what I'm, I have to enforce.
So the previous one, the electrician, the county board passed it with the restriction that the trucks would be inside.
I would have to pull it back up, but yes, that, that whatever came from, from this board did pass the county board.
I would, I would hate to have it like two different ways. Someone would like to spell it out.
You guys allow comment or?
Not at this point.
I mean, not sure what $13,000 a year in taxes gets you, but
Well, I think we need to make a recommendation on what needs to be indoors and what needs to be outdoors.
I would suggest that the trucks need to be indoors.
All the trucks are used to garbage trucks.
Well, the only other one is the one that carries the
That one doesn't smell.
Right. I don't know how big that other truck is. I don't know how big that other truck is.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion so that, uh, we can see if it gets a second. I move that we make the recommendation to the county board that all trucks are indoors.
I'll second it because we don't have the final say anyway.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Any other recommendations?
Any thoughts on the number of trucks to? Have you got thoughts on the number of trucks to be, despite limited storage?
Well, yeah, I wanted to put a restriction on the number of trucks, but it's got to be inside that already restricted it.
Right. I agree.
So for our recommendations, we have the special use will not transfer to the new owner and all trucks must be stored indoors, but I guess we didn't vote on that. Did we?
Yes, we did. We voted on that one. That was best.
When the county board moves, they can pick up whatever recommendations they want to.
Correct. Anything else? Hearing nothing else? Are we done for the evening? And do we recess this one until after the county board, the county board meets on the 23rd?
Yes.
Of May?
Yes. So this petition will move forward to the county board on May 23rd at 6 o'clock PM with a motion or with a recommendation to approve with the two conditions.
Right. So can we have a motion to recess?
I move to recess.
Second.
We have a motion to recess. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. The next regular scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals is at 7:00 PM on Thursday, June 6th, 2024 at 7:00 PM.